Fred, rock and roll. 6 o'clock, meeting with Governor.
Yep, ready.
Right to know law, meeting checklist. As Chairman of the Select Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this Board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that this is, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously. So the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to Governor's emergency order, however, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are, A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing a Zoom platform for electronic monitoring. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access contemporaneously, listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone, 1-646-558-8656, and entering meeting ID 83347477439, password 534667, or by, you know, entering the same information through zoom.us. By providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, we previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions were provided to the Town of Lee website, which is listed as LEENH.org. And then C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-659-5414. And D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event that the public is unable to access this meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled to another date. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. And so let's start the meeting by taking a roll call vote in attendance when each member states their presence. Also, please state whether there's anyone else in the room with them during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Mr. Bugby?
I'm here and nobody's in the room.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown?
I have no, I have no.
Yes? Are you still there, Mr. Brown? Well, Mr. Lacourse, I am here and nobody else is in the room with me. Did we lose Kerry Brown?
It looks to me like he's still here.
We still there, Kerry?
I think he's having audio, uh, video problems.
I think you're probably right at this point. But let us proceed and hopefully he will kick in. So Julie Glover, Town Administrator, you have the floor.
Okay, so we've been busy in the past week getting more information about the possibility of leasing the Daley office building on Caleb Highway. First, let's just quickly take a look at where we stand with tax revenue collections. This is, uh, these are the numbers that Linda gave me, um, just a short while ago. We're actually ahead by a percentage basis of where we were last year. So that's good news. Um, so this is the layout of the building. This also shows the proposed camera locations. I'll get to that in a minute. Um, so first, does anybody have any questions about the building or the layout?
Can, also Julie, can you just tell us which side is 125?
Yeah, 125 is over here.
Oh, what's over here?
Where?
So, oh, you can't see my, can you see the?
Oh.
So here is the entry.
All right.
Yeah.
And that faces Route 125.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Got a couple of questions. So I'm assuming everybody is located here, which includes everybody in the annex as well as in Town Hall?
Yes.
And also I noticed that you have some of the commissions that are here as well? You want to run?
Yes, yep. It also includes space for the four commissions and the supervisors of the checklist.
And this thing is totally air conditioned?
Yep. Totally air conditioned, and it has a whole building generator.
And I guess I'm gonna ask Police and Fire Chief, is outside lighting okay? Any comment?
Tom, you're muted.
I did drive by it over the weekend. It looks to be fine.
Okay, so it's enough for safety purposes, enough outside lights and?
Correct, yep. They have it well lit for the trucks coming in and out anyway.
This afternoon, I had a chance to talk to Town Administrator. I was asking her about parking. Will there be enough parking around the building? I just wanted to go through that for the public, please.
Sure, there actually is a lot of parking around the building. Um, what we would propose is that anyone coming in to see the Selectman's Office or to get assessing information would come in the front door, which is the one with the porch, um, and there's plenty of parking there. Anyone going to see the Town Clerk Tax Collector would drive around to this side of the building, and there's gonna be a separate entrance for the Town Clerk Tax Collector. And then in the back of the building is the separate entrance for Building Inspector, Planning and Zoning. And then on the fourth side of the building is an entrance that we propose using for meeting, the meeting room. So if someone, say, one of the commissions wanted to have a meeting after hours, they would have access to the meeting room via that door. And so they're actually, I don't know how many parking spaces there are. I don't know whether Karen knows that, but there's definitely, if you go over there, a lot of parking.
I guess I'm trying to ensure that we do not infringe where we don't belong. So once, if this thing goes through somehow, I wanna, is there striping over there on this building for people to park?
There isn't, but we would do the striping ourselves for the parking lot. But it, it's not, the parking wouldn't be used by any other, any of the other facilities on the lot.
And you said there would be some small modifications that would have to be built, or can you point out what the petitions would be?
Sure, this, um, you know, here with Karen, we've created a lobby. So that's three new walls and a door. There's a new corridor being created to access the Town Clerk Tax Collector's office. And then this opening needs to be created in this wall. And other than putting in the service windows and a new door right here into the assessing room, file room, that, that's all that needs to happen. Mr. Daley is going to put in two new, um, outdoor ramps so that the doors, with the exception of what we're calling the meeting room door, all will have ADA ramps.
How is this building heated? Is it gas or oil or what?
Uh, propane.
Propane, okay.
Yep. We are, we've asked for the historical data on electrical and propane use, but we just haven't received it yet.
Comments from Board or anybody else?
So where's the utility room where the furnace or whatever the heating thing and all that stuff is? Where's that?
I think it's above the ceiling, isn't it, Karen?
Oh, it's in the ceiling?
Most of the stuff is in the ceiling and the water tank, it's on-demand hot water. That's in the janitor, that's in the janitor closet by the welfare office.
Okay, I see that.
I would say that there's at least, once it's lined out, 50 parking spaces.
Well, that should be plenty.
Should be.
It should be. I got a question for Linda, is she out there? Do we have a vault in Town Hall?
Oh, the, um, the storage unit in the, uh, by the, by the Town Hall?
Yeah, I was wondering, do you, um, do we have like a vault that you put money in kind of thing?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we have, uh, three safes as a matter of fact. Um, one is the most, the newest one, which, I don't know, is about eight years old now, is a gun, is an actual gun safe that we use. And then there's another safe that we have for, um, vital records. And then there's a half-size, um, original vault. Um, so yeah, we put the money and all the, um, license plates, decals and everything. So that's, well, I'd say it's portable, but that will be moved when we move over. Those, those three safes will go.
Yes, that was my question, are they mobile enough to be moved?
Yes, 'cause I was there when the last one came in. It took three guys to bring it in, but it did, yes, they are movable.
And since you brought it up, the, the storage unit that's on the side? That stays, right? Are we moving anything in there?
Um, I hadn't thought about, uh, moving it, however, there is, there are things in there that can be thrown out now. They, they expired, so we're now allowed, we are now allowed to throw up. And I'm thinking that we probably should move a lot of it to, there's a, a place in the safety complex upstairs. Correct, Julie, that we, while it's back?
As long as there's still room in it. I have not been in there since, I think a lot was moved in, the Heritage Commission.
So if there is no room, then we would, we would, as long as that is allowed to stay there, we, we leave everything else in there.
This is just my opinion, not the opinion of the other Board's members, but if this move is to take place, I'm hoping we're, I don't want to use the word abandoning, but we're moving out of Town Hall and the annex, and it would not be used by anybody at that point until we make formal decisions, uh, through, you know, I know Scott is being involved in this with respect to how to renovate Town Hall and the meeting spot that it used to be. Uh, and then the annex, I don't know, that might be up for grab. I don't know what's gonna happen with the annex. Maybe it'll get demolished. It's just thoughts at this time. But I don't want to have people moving into this new building and then dealing with COVID issues, running into the old Town Hall to use it as a meeting space when that's one of the reasons we're moving out of the old Town Hall. So I'm just putting that down on the record for the public at this point. Further comments and questions about this? Julie, got anything else?
Uh, yeah.
Go ahead.
So we have, as I mentioned, been gathering costs for this. Um, we received an estimate, I think we actually got an estimate of $7,000 for the fit-up. Uh, we rounded it up to $10,000 in case something comes along that's unanticipated. The IT costs, um, Steve Gagnon suggests that we get a couple of new network switches, um, which would enhance the performance of our entire network. Um, our system works okay, but it doesn't work as fast as it could. And sometimes some of the software programs, particularly the Tyler financial software, uh, can be a little glitchy. We'd also propose putting in security cameras, both inside and outside. Um, the line item that you see for the public computer, we wouldn't necessarily have to do that right now, 'cause I don't know that we would do that with COVID, but that's to put a computer screen and keyboard in the lobby so that if someone comes in and wants to look up assessing information, they would just do it from the front lobby. Phone systems, about $6,400. This would allow us to, um, make three-digit extension calling to the other buildings, the Public Safety Complex, right now. If I need to call the police station, I have to dial their number. Uh, one of the things that that does is it tile, it ties up one of the two Town Hall lines. If we had a direct connection, which this system would give us, then we wouldn't be tying up a phone line to make an office-to-office phone call. The mover that we met with, William C. Huff, uh, gave us a proposed price of just under $5,000. I think it was $4,673. We rounded it up to 5,000. Um, you know, we probably will need to buy some boxes, which we can purchase from him. One of the other things that we were looking at were interior locks. Um, I'm suggesting, let me just see if I can remember which one of these spreadsheets. Uh, I'm suggesting that we do something like this, where each office has a push-button lock or a somewhat fancier one where you have an app with your phone. Um, they're just under $100 apiece. So I'm suggesting that we do that so that we don't have to key the building. That way, when someone leaves, you just change the lock. Um, we are not really proposing to get any new furniture, but you never know, we might get in the space and find that we need something, so I just put $2,000 in for furniture. I have forbidden Karen from bringing over the rusted metal folding chairs that she uses when she has a meeting. I think we could probably spring for at least a couple of new chairs for that. Interior signs, we're just gonna need some signs so that people can find their way around the building. Uh, then we get to the Hackworth items. Um, he met us over there on Friday. He's proposing an entirely new fire alarm system when there already is an existing system. Unfortunately, Chief Nemeth wasn't able to join us that day, but he's gonna take a look at the system and speak with Mr. Hackworth. I, I'm not convinced that we need a brand-new entire system, so we may not need to spend that $9,855. Uh, same with the security alarm system. I'm not entirely convinced that we need to replace what's there. Um, we also talked to him about exterior door access. I'm suggesting that we get a swipe card system for all of the four exterior doors. Um, again, that way we can keep track of who goes in and out of the building. And if someone leaves, then, so for example, if there's a commission chair and somebody retires and somebody takes their place, not everybody has a key that gives them access to the building. We can just program their card out of the system. Uh, this interior remote access, there's a door, let me go back to the, um, go back to the floor plan. There's a door.
There it is.
Leading from the entry into the corridor where my office, Joanne's office and so forth are. I'm suggesting that we put a lock on that door that's electronic, and it's kind of like the buzz-in system. So if someone's coming into the building to see me or Joanne, um, Denise would be able to buzz them in. Other than that, there won't be any other public access into the building.
So let me get that clarified again. There's no other public access through Denise in the front end?
No.
No, there's no other public access, or no, there is public access?
Well, there's no other public access into the building other than the door that we're proposing for the meeting room, and we need to talk about how we can program that so that no one would have access to that during the day. And then there's the door into the Town Clerk Tax Collector and the door into the Planning and Zoning, but we've sealed off access. They can't gain access to the rest of the building.
Okay. That's what I was going after, once they're in, they're tied in that one spot.
Right, yep. So where was I?
Can you pause for just a minute? So what stops them, let's say I'm having a meeting in the meeting room in the building, what stops them from getting to your office? I don't see any doors to stop them.
Right, well, Karen and I talked a lot about that. We may ultimately decide that we do want to put a door in so that they can't access the rest of the building.
Yeah.
Um, we'd probably have to put two doors in because you may still want to have them have access to the bathrooms and access to the kitchen.
I see, okay.
So that's something we can certainly talk about. That's something Karen and I talked about quite a bit.
Have you guys looked at, one of the things that I know you guys have problems with are the hot people and the cold people in the building currently? Have you guys talked about that? And I'm not sure where the zones are. I don't know what you have for heating and cooling, but just so that, you know, if, Julie, if you're a hot person, Joanne's a cold person, if you're in the same zone, you're gonna have problems.
Yeah, I think, uh, Karen can talk a little bit more about that. I think there are three zones, Karen?
Yes, there's three zones. So Bill and I have our own zone. Linda?
Is that gonna work out? Are you both hot or cold people or what?
That's perfect.
Okay, all right.
And then the rest of the left side of the building, like where Julie, Joanne, Welfare and Linda's offices, that's another zone. And then the meeting room and the kitchen and the assessor's office and the committee and commission's office is another zone.
So where's, where's Denise? Where's?
Denise is up front and she's in the same zone as Julie and Joanne.
So are they all hot people or cold people?
Well, you can also?
With the exception of Joanne.
Right, and you can also adjust each room, each office has its own vent.
You can close them or shut them a little bit.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
Hold on, before we proceed, Mr. Brown, are you there? Mr. Brown? Are you there?
I can just barely hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you perfectly. I guess the question I'm asking?
Fine, I can see you, but I can?
Yeah. Are you by yourself? Are you by yourself?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure. I have a question for the police chief. Do we have a protocol for this building for active shooter issues?
It'll be the same. Uh, I'll modify it a little bit, but it'll be pretty much the same as the, uh, current one we have now. There'll be, uh, I'm sure Julie and I talked about it. Um, they're gonna try to put the same type of, um, emergency button that we have here, panic alarm.
Mm-hmm.
But that's something, once we know this is a definite goal, then I will massage ours so it works with this building.
Okay. I just want to make sure with all these odd times that are going on that we have some kind of protection.
Yep.
Yeah, and I believe that Hackworth's, um, security estimate included panic alarms. And they're actually a panic alarm that you can carry with you.
Yeah, they're wireless.
Right.
Wow, wow, that's pretty good.
So as you move through the building, you could always have your panic alarm with you.
Wow.
Julie, I have a question in terms of that, that, uh, layout there. I assume those things that look like these, is that for the video?
That's for the cameras, yes.
All right, so there's one on each side of the building outside, and then there's ones internally?
Correct.
Yep, thanks.
Yep, um, and Steve Gagnon laid those out.
Okay.
That's all monitored by the PD?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, uh, I think Steve told me he could give the PD access to the cameras.
Just like we do with the transfer station.
Yep. Um, and the proposal has, um, a monitor for Karen so she can see who's approaching her door. And then Denise will have a monitor in her office so she can see all of the cameras.
What about the Town Clerk Tax Collector?
Um, we didn't propose putting a monitor in there, but we certainly can.
I think it might be fruitful that everybody has that equal protection.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Um, put a number in here for signage. We're gonna have to do a lot of signage around the building to make sure that people understand what door they need to go to. And then Karen, again, and Steve can talk a little more about the paving line. Um, there's an area in, well, kind of the, no, I guess it's the back of the building that right now is not paved and it probably should be.
Um, Julie, I have a comment. You put signage for traffic identification, I assume, and this is why I'm checking. Um, you're gonna put some signage at the old Town Hall directing them to the new location?
Yes.
Okay, so that includes that?
Um, sure.
Okay.
And we're still talking about access off 125 or the other roads?
Um, I mean, probably the main access would be off of 125, but we are able to use Buzzell Lane.
Buzzell Lane, is that? That's gravel, right?
That's the road off of, um, George Bennett.
Is it gravel?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
The, using that road probably isn't such an issue for employees or even for town residents who know how to get in and out that way. But you kind of have to weave between tractor-trailers, um, and a couple of warehouse buildings.
So, bottom line?
Well, right now, what's being proposed is a $4,800 a month lease. Um, if all of those costs hold, and again, some of them, like I said, the 9,800 for the fire alarm, we may not need to do, but in the first year, all in, we're at $116,715.
Refresh my memory, what is the lease include and what doesn't include? What we're responsible for and what is he responsible for?
We are responsible for our utilities, so the electricity and, I mean, all the normal, you know, the cable, but we don't pay for cable TV, but the internet, electricity, the propane, we'd be responsible for mowing immediately around our building and snow plowing immediately around the building. He had also said, um, that he wanted us to agree to pay for half of the HVAC system if and when it needs to be replaced, but our attorney and I don't think that's a good idea, so right now that is not in the draft lease that Laura has prepared. Um, he will and is in the process of cleaning and painting the entire building, which if you saw the inside of it, you would know that that's no small thing. Um, and he's also going to put in the two additional, uh, handicap access ramps outside the building.
Um, can I ask Steve, any concerns about plowing around that building, Steve?
No, it's fairly straightforward, except for the back parking lot that Julie mentioned about paving. Uh, that's all dirt, so that'd be more of a pain, but the rest of it's fine.
Thank you.
So what I'm hearing, if I'm gonna break this down a little bit, it's about, I guess under $60,000 to lease it per year?
Yes.
Right? And the rest of the money is going to update it and make it more useful. And where would these monies come from now?
My?
I know the operational budget will carry the 60,000, right?
Right, well, my recommendation would be to petition the Department of Revenue Administration for an emergency appropriation. Under the emergency orders, we would typically have to have a public hearing, but we don't have to have a public hearing, and DRA is committed to turning an answer around in two business days.
So we take it out of unassigned fund balance?
Out of unassigned fund balance. We also still have about $40,000 coming to us from the second installment of the additional state aid. You may recall that in October, we received about $39,000, and we're supposed to get another installment of that, um, before October of fiscal '21. We also have not spent any of the fiscal '20 contingency money, so that's $20,000 that's still sitting in the unassigned fund balance.
And it was your estimate last time we talked, is that you're a supreme mover person, you can get this done in short time, right?
Everybody seems to be telling us that we can hit that September 1st deadline.
Excuse me one second. The only holdup is going, we still haven't heard back from DOT, so they're the holdout if and what they're going to require us to do for access.
Well, yeah, Karen and I go back and forth on this. There was an office building before, it's still an office building, and people got in and out of it before, so I don't know whether DOT would require us to do anything.
I can't imagine they would. Like you said, it was an office space.
But it all? Right, but it depends on what it was approved for back in 2007, if they, if they reached out to District 6 or not. And District 6 won't look to see what is there until the applicant, they get their application on Monday, for the change-of-use application on Monday.
Hey Julie, what do you need to go forward with?
Well, if the Board is, Select Board is, still wants us to move forward on this, I think our next step should be writing to DRA and requesting the funds, because obviously if, for whatever reason, they say no... Because obviously, if for whatever reason they say no, I'm not sure how we go forward with this.
Well, let me make it a form of a motion at this point. I move that we move forward with the moving the existing town hall offices to the proposed building and as designed, including a, give me a round figure budget, Julie?
Uh, how about $125,000?
$125,000, and hopefully the monies to come from the unassigned fund balance and other areas within the budget.
Can I, hold on one second. I think the board should go out and do a site walk and just look at the site and look at the interior of the building, look at the traffic flow, just to make sure that you agree what's up. Just make sure you all understand and do it during the day when the trucking company is open, so you know what is involved.
I've been out there, so I know what it looks like. Have you been out there, Steve?
Me? Yeah, I went out with Karen the other day and measured for parking.
Okay, just wanna make sure. I know Tom must have been out there.
More times.
Yeah, Scott, have you been out there?
Um, yep.
Mr. Brown, are you out there?
Yes, I've been out there.
So I think we've all seen it, so I'd like to move forward at this point. Do I have a second?
Can you say that motion again?
Did anybody record it?
Well, I started to.
Okay, I move that we move forward with the plan to move our existing town hall offices to the proposed building. What's the name of the area?
Call it 251 Caleb Highway.
251 Caleb Highway, and to move with respect to the layout that was presented today. And to include a budget which will be hopefully coming from unassigned fund balance of $125,000, of which $60,000 or just under that would be tied to lease and the rest will be to outfit the building.
I'll second it.
We have a second. Further discussion on the motion.
I have questions about some of the details, if we could.
Please.
So do I.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Mr. Brown hasn't been able to talk, wasn't he go first?
Mr. Brown?
Well, first off, I'd like- Are going to work on the lease.
I didn't quite catch that, you-
Are we working, when we had our-
Got a connection problem there, Mr. Brown?
I wonder if it's his headphones, because he never used to wear the headphones.
I think it probably is. Probably the jack is loose.
Yeah.
Uh, I think he's asking about the lease. Yes, our attorney sent me a draft lease today. It went, I had Karen take a look at it. It went back and forth a couple of times. She, the attorney, is gonna check with Primex to make sure that she has their approved language for indemnification and insurance. And then we're gonna send it to Mr. Daly.
The headphones in order to hear.
Oh.
Did you get it?
The question is, can you hear me?
I can hear you perfectly. You have another question, Mr. Brown?
Yes, I have a couple of- Attorney or the attorney is now working on-
Yes, the attorney is working on the lease.
Okay. Obviously, I missed a lot of the conversation, but I see to do our capital improvement- When we leave, when we leave, for instance- stays in place. The agreement.
Okay, I think the question was, if we spend all this money on improvements, do we leave them in place? That's a question our attorney asked, and we'll have to put some language in the lease. The walls would stay in place, but I think everything else, most everything else could come with it. So for example, the phone system could come with us, the IT equipment could come with us, the cameras could come with us. So most of it, we'd be able to take out of that building.
I've handled a few- Capital improvements to the building that you're moving into. Embolism for that when you leave.
I don't know that Mr. Daly would agree with that. He, he has agreed to pay the taxes on the building, which is not a small thing. Taxes on that building are $15,000 a year. Barrington, for example, has to pay the taxes on the building that they lease.
Yeah, I just wanna remind everybody that we're getting this for less than market price for a regular lease. We're paying less than a dollar a square foot when a dollar 10 is the average.
Okay, that's one- Putting $2,000 in security, et cetera, et cetera. Get the building.
Didn't, didn't catch any of that.
Mr. Brown, you're cutting in and out, and it's a, and we can only hear part of what you're saying.
What if he calls in on the telephone, disconnects his computer and calls in?
That might be better for right now.
That's alright, I'll put it, I'll put something in right-
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Bugby?
I had questions about the lease too. One of the things that Julie and I talked about, and hopefully she's got this approved, is entering into a three-year lease. We're allowed to do this, right?
According to our attorney, as long as we have non-appropriation language in the lease, we can do it.
Okay, the other question in terms of usually, I'm not sure, I'm misremembering possibly, but the whole $100,000 seems to be something in terms of using monies from the unassigned fund balance. Is there a special exception that we can go to 125? Or proposing to take like $100,000 out of unassigned fund balance and then $25,000 out of operating? Could you go over that for me, please?
I guess I'm not sure I understand the question. You think that there's a limit to the amount of money we can use out of the unassigned?
Yeah, that's what I'm questioning. There's usually, and it's, for some reason, $100,000 sits in my mind in terms of being allowed to use that much, you know, without a legislative body approval. So I assume that's been checked out, so we can try to get 125?
Again, I talked to DRA and I was told that we can petition them to use money out of the unassigned fund balance. I don't, I'm not aware, I haven't been told, nor have I seen in any RSA, that there's a limit to the amount of money.
Could you check that for me, just to make sure?
Yeah.
And just say, we're looking to take 125,000.
Right.
You see any problem with that?
Yeah. But a question that I, what I was hoping to do with the motion tonight was make the request of DRA.
Okay.
Because the sooner we know that answer, the better.
Alright. The other question I have in terms of this budget, I don't see anything, I don't know if you've had a chance to do it, but the differential in terms of utility costs, we're still gonna have to pay something for the old building.
Right, so-
But what's this new building gonna cost us extra in terms of heat, electricity, all that other stuff?
Yeah, I took a look at that today. Right now, between town hall and the annex, we're spending about $7,000 for electricity and propane. The propane, though, includes the library. Again, I've asked Mr. Daly a couple of times, and he is trying to get that historical information from the tenant, but we don't have it yet.
Okay. So possibly, because you're asking for 125, that's a difference of maybe 80, 8,300. So if anything, we could use that, plus your question about the alarm system, security and stuff, so-
Right.
We should have a little bit of wiggle room there in case we need to spend extra money.
Correct.
You have the contingency, right?
We, yes, we will have a $20,000 contingency in the fiscal '21 budget.
Okay, and you'll get to that a little bit later, in terms of encumbering?
Uh, yes, I mean, I can talk about that now, if you-
You've gotta vote. You've gotta-
Oh, I forgot, you didn't vote yet, sorry.
We're still in discussion.
Okay.
One more thing about the lease. So you said it was a three-year release, but it's a three-year rollover release, right? Lease?
Correct. It's a three-year lease with the opportunity to roll it over two more times.
That should give us plenty of time to try to do something with the municipal building.
Yep.
Okay, and the restoration of town hall.
Yep.
Any further discussion on the motion? During then, I'm gonna call for a vote. Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yes, and Ms. LaCrosse, yes. So it's unanimous vote to board and contact the DRA and continue working in this area.
Okay.
Now you have the floor, Town Administrator.
Uh, yes, so encumbrances, as everybody probably should know by now, the only way to encumber money is to have a contract or a legally binding obligation. Because of the timing of this, we don't, we don't have that yet. So even though we're probably gonna turn back $250,000 to the unassigned fund balance from the fiscal year '20 budget, we, we just, the timing isn't such that we could have the board transfer money into the building's account and then pay for all of this out of that. And quite frankly, because our plan is to use the unassigned fund balance, it really doesn't matter. The $250,000 from fiscal '20 is gonna go back into the unassigned fund balance, and that's where we're proposing to spend it out of. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Makes sense to me.
Okay.
So there's no other funds or contracts we need to encumber for anything else?
No, I've asked the trustees of trust if we could use money from the town building capital reserve fund to pay for any of the improvements in a building we are leasing but don't own.
Yep.
But they haven't given me an answer. They gave me a promising half answer that they think that we could do it, but they needed more information, which I sent to them. I just don't know when their meeting yet to make that decision.
Well, I think if DRA allows us to do this, I don't think we need to pursue that at this time.
Yeah, I was just trying to cover all the bases.
That's fine, that's fine.
Anything else in this area, Julie?
No, I, I think we're good, still moving forward. The next, the next thing we need to do is Karen and I and everybody else really needs to drill down into the layout and start measuring things and laying them out in the new office to make sure that we know where everything's going. That's important for two reasons. One, to make sure everything's gonna fit, which we know it is. But also, on moving day, we do not want there to be chaos when the movers show up with everything and nobody knows where it goes.
That would be a shocker, wouldn't it?
Right, we wanna make sure that that moving day is a well-oiled machine. I think we don't need to talk about it now, but at some point soon, we're gonna need to talk about the timing of the move and do we shut down for a period of time so that we can accomplish the move or how we wanna do that? The biggest time, time-consuming thing relative to the move is gonna be the packing, not the actual moving day. The actual moving day is one day. But it's finding the time to pack everything that's gonna be the problem, because obviously, we need everything. So how do we pack it and still use it?
Yeah, well, the other opportunity is a phased move. I don't know how you decouple the, you know, tax collector's office from the-
Right.
Board of Selectmen or, or planning and zoning, it probably can decouple, there's a little more gapping there, but that's-
Yeah, it would, it would cost more money for the actual move, because you'd have to get the mover here two or three times.
True. I'll leave that up to you to come-
Yeah, I think if we discuss it later, but one of the thoughts I had is we close for a few days.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're gonna have to do that.
Maybe it's, you know, you close on Thursday and Friday and you guys move your stuff and get ready. If you have to, maybe you go into Saturday morning, but I think that allows you to get yourself all in order and be ready to open up again on Monday.
Yep.
So can I ask the Town Administrator to please put a summary statement inside the equir or someplace at this point to quell any questions and comments and I don't know, issues that could arise that the Board of Selectmen is moving in this direction? And then ask the Town Administrator to look into the financial cost, moving costs, everything else that's associated with it?
Yep.
I don't mind even if you put the proposed plan, call it a proposed plan up on the website. As much, you know, transparency we have, I think the better off we are, because this is a major move for the town of Lake.
Right. I actually sent a fairly lengthy email on Friday to the supervisors of the checklist and the four chair of the commissions explaining that we've been talking about this, what our plans are. And that I sent them a copy of the floor plan. And then I think it was probably later that day, maybe the following day, it was on Facebook. So-
I'm the one that did that. It's on the Town Center Building Committee.
Right.
BC, and we got some questions in there. The, the thing that I would, the only negative thing I've heard so far is somebody said, we're not authorized to enter to a lease and spend these particular monies. Julie, when you write your thing, can you address those particular points?
Yep.
But on Facebook, they seem to be, other than that one comment, they seem to be positive and they seem to be understanding.
Right.
One, one person's question said, can you, I think Karen answered it, can we move the library as well or something like that?
Yeah, I was, I guess pleasantly surprised that there wasn't more comment about it.
No, wow, and it's hit, as far as looking at numbers, there was about 250 people that actually looked at it.
Yep.
So that's not insignificant.
Right. Right.
Okay, are we done with this area?
Yep.
Alright, let's move on to item number three. I move to accept the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second? We have a second? Any discussion?
No.
Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown, roll call vote for the consent agenda?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Ms. LaCrosse, yes, so consent agenda has been approved. Miscellaneous. Scott, do you have something?
Yeah, just, just wanna update the board. Deb Sugarman and I met with Suzanne Hird and Ricky Stevens today. We gave them copies of the letter, spoke to them about, we were there to speak to them. We weren't there to make any agreements or decisions and get their feedback in terms of the, the letter that the board sent them. They seemed to appreciate that and they want some time to go and discuss it and see how they wanna proceed. So Ricky said that he'd give me a call when they are ready to talk again, so Deb and I will go back. They didn't seem very happy about it, but I told them, you know, we're just here to discuss, you know, and hear your particular viewpoint, see if there's any kind of common ground. So they, they took that, so hopefully we'll hear back from them soon. I think we should give them a little bit of time, but not too, too much.
Appreciate you doing that, so what's a little bit of time in your?
I don't know, couple of weeks maybe or a week. I don't want to let it go too, too far, because if we're gonna do something legally, we should get on the ball and do it. Also, just so people are aware, we did social distancing and Deb and I had our masks on, so just-
Very good. Very good. Anything else on the miscellaneous from anybody else? I move to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Mr. Bugby?
Uh, yes, sir.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. LaCrosse, yes, we are adjourned.